I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Swicker.
Sure.
Ms. Brier, here. Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Ms. Palmer, here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a very special presentation, Teri Gashama.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Council Members, and all of our guests that are in the audience. I think you know that I am such a shy person, and I never get excited about anything, but I'm here tonight to share a great excitement. Two years ago, we started a project of vision and a journey to build a playground for children with physical and mental challenges, to give them the joy of play like they've never experienced before. While all of our playgrounds are accessible, that often means that we just have surfaces that make that a trek for them to make, but all the playground equipment doesn't really meet the needs of all of our children. So we started on this vision, and we started bringing partners together, and the very first one that said, "We'll work this together with you," was a school district. They stepped forward, and this, as you know, has become a joint project, working together up in the Highlands area to build the first successful playground. And in that time, we have been out soliciting all of our partners. And to date, we have the Rotary Club of Renton, the Lions Club of Renton. We received a King County grant for $65,000. The Renton Housing Authority has stepped up. And now, tonight, we're very excited to announce that we are receiving another partner with an amount of money to come into the playground from First Financial Northwest Foundation. And we have three very esteemed members of our community, Gary Fall, Joanne Lee, and Gary Kovas here. If I totaled all the hours that these three people have given to our community, it would be a tough number to come to, but I am just privileged to be able to be here tonight and say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you for believing in this playground and having the vision with us." We are excited, will be more excited when we get to cut that ribbon and open it, but I would like to introduce Gary Fall, who will make the presentation to you, Mr. Mayor. Gary Kovas, I'm sorry.
The older gentleman.
That's fine. Maybe I was a little worried about Mr. Kovas coming in my company. You go, sir.
Thanks, baby. Hand me that. Well, this is really tough duty. You know, you send Teri after some foundation people with a request that has a lot of merit. And as you know, she is somewhat persuasive in her arguments and her presentation, and that's exactly what we found at the foundation. Just a couple of comments about the foundation. The foundation that is going to be donating the money is the First Savings Bank Northwest Foundation, and I think, as most of you know, this was a foundation that was formed when the First Savings Bank of Renton went public in 2007. We were blessed with the bank donating a little better than $16 million worth of stock to the foundation, and then five people were kind of appointed to manage that. Three of us are here, Joanne and Gary Fall. Harry Blenko is also a fourth board member, and Chaz DeLorenzi, who all of you know. Chaz, who is really the kind of only outside person of the five of us, serves as chairman of our board and the one who provides the leadership. And then we have a young lady by the name of Stephanie Carpiak that basically handles all the logistic things with the foundation. We do a lot of our giving directly, but also do a good deal of it through the Renton Community Foundation. So we're just delighted when you get a project like this, that the city and the school district, and you see the service groups that we talked about here, and the grants and other people can come together and support a project like this. And I think this is just another example of what makes Renton a great place to live. You have an issue, people come together, and it serves lots of real needs, some expanded needs for some of the kids that are most needy in the school district, and also open to the public through all other venues. City's going to take over, which we love, the management of this, once it's put together. And this is the kind of thing that makes this a great community. It isn't your problem or our problem, anyways, it's collectively ours, and I think we reach out to see how we can make this thing go. And we are delighted to make a contribution toward this project in the sum of $150,000.
Oh!
Mr. Mayor, if I could have maybe the council doing this while behind in the background, we'll do a quick shot.
And Teri. No, I'm fine. The negotiator, Teri. Really, I think she should be. Come on, Teri, you need to be up there, the negotiator.
They're up front.
I guess they are. There you go.
Well, once again, thank you, you guys, First Savings Bank and First Financial, and whatever name they happen to be going by, have been such huge supporters of this community for so many years, and this is just another prime example. This is a huge donation to a very great cause. Thanks to Teri Gashama, too, who's just been shepherding this thing through, and we're really making a lot of progress. We've got a lot of partners involved in it, so having our local bank as a huge contributor to it is really priceless, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, next is the administrative report. Mr. Covington.
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to audience comment. We have several people who have signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes to address the council. There's a timer next to the city clerk, so when you see it flashing yellow, your time is just about up. First is Monica Richer.
My name is Monica Richer, R-I-C-H-T-E-R, and I live on Mercer Island. I'm a pediatrician with Valley Children's Clinic up in Renton, and thank you again. I was here last week and heard some very excellent presentations. As you know, you're being asked to make a very important public health decision about whether or not to continue to fluoridate the water here in Renton. I'm very impressed with the amount of research that's been done, and I understand while it's not, I don't think you're expected to become experts in the field, but it is up to you to make a determination as to whether adding fluoride is safe and effective. And when I'm asked to make those important types of decisions, I read as much as I can about it, become as educated as possible, but I also put a lot of weight on what the experts, the respected experts in the field, think. And it's pretty clear to me that all of the respected experts in the field of dentistry feel that fluoridation is safe and effective. I kind of questioned last week why the people who are opposed to fluoridation didn't go to the University of Washington Dental School right here to choose someone to speak in opposition of fluoride, and it makes me think that perhaps they had difficulty finding someone more locally because they brought someone from Oregon. I am here, I understand the issue was brought up about individual rights, and I'm a proponent of individual rights, but as a pediatrician, I speak for the rights of children. And the children who are most at risk for caries, for cavities in their teeth, are those who come from low-income households. These are households where they often don't get adequate medical or dental care. Often, there may not be insurance available for these individuals, for the children. The parents may not, or the caregivers may not have access to getting the fluoride. And most importantly, I think those are households where I don't know how reliable the parents or caregivers are at making sure that children have good dental hygiene, that their teeth are brushed, and even if they had the fluoride to give to the children, I don't know that that would be given on a daily basis. So as a pediatrician, I strongly urge you, think about the rights of the children. This is a very important decision. As I said last week, I feel very strongly about fluoridation in the water, and I also understand that in the water, because the fluoride is delivered throughout the day, it's more effective than just one dose of fluoride every day. So those are my reasons. I hope you'll take them under careful consideration, and thank you for the time, and I strongly urge you to vote to continue fluoridation.
Thank you. Next is Ruthie Larson.
Several years ago, when we first decided that we would have aid cars, we had a citywide vote. The citywide vote went for us having aid cars. Now, I don't know what the process is, when something that's on the records is having been voted for, all of a sudden decides to go away. I know that we have, over the years, we have improved fire department equipment, and I know that one of those results was, we kept the insurance rates for fire down for people who lived in Renton. So I don't know how you overcome that. I mean, that was voted on by the people. I remember our first aid car was a white, Lord, I can't even remember what to call them, oh, I will, it'll come back to me. And we used, you know, what we had. We decided that all of the fire department people should be trained, EMTs, we got that. So now, I don't understand what you're doing, when you're running a multi-thousand-dollar fire truck to go on an aid car. The depreciation on those trucks, and to have to replace those trucks, will cost a heck of a lot more than it would to run aid cars. And I think that in doing what you're doing, what's to stop those people who have, who need that consistently over time? What's to stop their insurance company from raising their insurance rates? Because they have to pay $600 plus $14 a mile to transport someone. And I really think it's a bad idea. I sincerely hope that none of you need to call the aid car or the fire truck, as I have had to do. And that fire truck looks good if you've got a kitchen fire. But I just think that there should be a way for you to provide the aid cars. And like I said, I sincerely hope it doesn't raise insurance rates, because most of those people who are insured now are insured by Medicare, and we don't know where that's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John White.
I don't know when the clock starts, but... Thank you, John. John White, W-H-I-T-E, Bellevue. Thank you for the opportunity to address the mayor and all the city council members again. Just picking up, basically, somewhat where I left off last week. Memorandum did come out, I think you all received it. And last time on the slide I presented was the impact on the height of ADUs based on the orientation. Well, I've learned since last time that in the memorandum, it doesn't matter, it doesn't make any difference what the orientation, they allow the orientation of the ADU not to be in the same direction as the primary dwelling, which is, which actually, that's nice to know. It's not explicit in the code, but it's kind of implied because all the ones that have been built or approved from scratch actually have them in the same orientation. So what I just did here, real quick, was, okay, if that is the case, you can see the different orientations here, sloping this way or this way, making it square, it's under 800 square feet, but making, or taking the orientation out of the picture, which we've done here, it still doesn't totally eliminate all the problem. For example, if you've got a primary dwelling here, and you've got your roof pitch, same roof pitch, which is required, this is about 3.6, 7 feet, this ends up being 4.6, 7 feet, one foot higher. One foot, it's such a small thing, makes a difference, because, you know, if you drop below seven feet, it's not legally high enough. So orientation does make a difference, but since it's taken out of the picture, it doesn't eliminate all the problems with the differing geometric footprint in this example. And once again, if you're standing in the middle of the road at about six feet high, and you're looking over the top of the primary roof, the site clearance here is 4.8 feet, so you're not even going to see it with an additional extra foot. Second of four slides. Okay, here, last time, I had the slope going down 8%, and for various reasons, which I can't go into now, came out to about 1.36 feet too short. So in the memorandum, it was kind of, there's a paragraph, and I've referenced it right here, page two of four, paragraph three, that talks about how on the, yes, because the way the city actually measures building height, you do get penalized on the slope. And on the slide I used last time, with the slope going down, but then they go to explain that it doesn't penalize you if it's on the incline or going up, ascending. And I read that, it's like, it sure seems like it to me, and actually, I drew this in a way so that, you know, this is only 8% slope, this thing could be up to 50 feet long or even longer, so you could actually make this quite a bit more than 0.88 feet. So I hope Randy and Mr. Ed Prince, and I don't know who else is on the committee, would read that paragraph referenced here, because they make some opinions or references about not being penalized and height and stuff, which to me seems quite erroneous. So I really hope you get a chance to do that. And then the third of the four slides, this is a point which hasn't been brought up before, but it's, I've got other points, but time is limited. Let's suppose you've got your primary dwelling here, your ADU in the back. This is slab-on-grade, height and everything. If, now, let's suppose you want to build an ADU in the back, let's just say it's very similar in size, but you want to make it a crawl space. Well, you're not going to be able to do that very easily, because to do a crawl space, typically, you're going to go about 12 inches for insulation, you need crawl space, vents, and clearance. That's about 1.75 feet. Now, you've just lost 1.75 feet just because you want a crawl space. So, last slide, quickly. So it was proposed to allow it up to 5, 5 feet and 9 and 1/2 inches, based on the code. Anyways, it's referenced in the memorandum, to go, that 8 feet is a story in Renton. I suggest we go half of that, 4 feet. Might need more time to consider this, maybe send it, you know, it might take, to read this, to go over it, it may be good to send it back to the planning department, the planning commission, the planning committee, and maybe consider a little bit more, get a little more public comment, because I think there are other issues that haven't been brought up. And then, right now, you have to do both ACUP, the Administrative Conditional Use Permit, just to get an ADU, only one's been built so far, and it's not like it's a big, it's not like a big urgent thing. I think a little more consideration and time would be very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next was Howard McComber.
Howard McComber, I live in Renton. I sent out a little note, and I think some of you probably picked it up. I'm not a research scientist, and I'm not a doctor, but I live here in Renton, and I drink the water, I've been drinking it for years. And to tell the truth, I grew up knowing that fluoridation was important for the water because it's good for your teeth, because that's what everybody told me. And then, we've come into looking at some more information, and that's been a huge question mark in my mind. Now, I mentioned this in my letter, Don and I, and a few other people in this room, are old enough to know or remember all sorts of jingles that came with cigarette ads were on the TV. When I was younger, cigarettes were under a lot of pressure, because there were some people who thought cigarettes had bad things in them. Fortunately, the cigarette companies paid a great deal of money and managed to have all over everywhere, the press constantly, that there was no conclusive scientific evidence that cigarette smoking was injurious to your health, just wasn't there. But you know, it was, and the truth finally came out, and then we had all kinds of trouble. Actually, I believe cigarette smoking is terribly injurious to your health. I'm a Mormon, I've never smoked, never bought a pack of cigarettes, not an issue. But one of the nice things is, I don't have to buy cigarettes, and I didn't then, and neither did my family, so actually, we could avoid the whole issue. We didn't have to do it, which way the advertising went. I drink water here in the Highlands. Most of the people in the Highlands drink tap water. We're of an economic group, or we enjoy, we're quite a source of different tap waters in different areas, so we have it here. And the thing that I'm concerned about is that we did have some very good scientific things to me. Now, I'm not a scientist, but it sure did sound like the old cigarette gag to me. I've heard this before, and I've seen it before, and it is scary. This is something, I think we have a problem here that needs to be resolved, and there's two parts to this problem. One of them is the fact that everybody, last week, was shuffling all the responsibility and the liability to you guys. And I thought, you guys do not need this kind of liability, and if we do, I think we need to have a more balanced approach. We had another thing up here, and I didn't mention it, but I'm going to say it anyway. We had the fire department and the budget thing, and we've all been, we've got on the budget committee, you know how tight that is, and you're doing a fabulous job. And we're looking for places to save money, and I've got one here. We take the $80,000 that we spend for the fluoridation and stop the fluoridation for now. Now, if it's found, the fluoridation is okay, and the thing I'm more concerned about isn't the teeth, though I don't think it does anything for your teeth, really, because the kids in the poor areas have bad teeth, and they drink fluoridated water, and the kids in the good area don't drink so much fluoridated water because they can get spring water, so I think that blows that away. But the thing I'm concerned with is brains, and I'm concerned about autism. One in 166 children are born with autism today. I have a grandson who has autism. He's older. Back when it was, it was only one in 1,400. We're having an increase, and I think, just me, I think the increase, it's of the water. I think the water's the problem, everybody drinks it, and I think we have stuff in it, and some people are susceptible to it, and some of us could drink rocks and have, you know, whatever. Long ago, when the Earth's crust was forming, in the Arctic, we drank some, all sorts of stuff, and we're grateful to get it. But the truth is, that this is scary to me, and I think it's something we need to pull back on. I really think that, I think the people in fluoridation are wonderful people. I don't think that their scientists are any better than the guys who've been up, taken a look at it to get, and all the scientists that I've heard were just like me. They said they thought fluoridation was good till they started checking it. Well, I think that we need to check it as a city. I think you guys don't need that kind of liability. I think this is a wait-and-see thing, and I think, really, this is Howard, I'd stop it. I'd say, you know, guys, in interest of public health, we have some real questions about the safety of this, because I have some real questions about the safety of the water with fluoridation in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Next is Keith Adams.
My name is Keith Adams, and I've been a resident of the same house in Renton for 34 years, and I'm a volunteer at the hospital and at the Renton Senior Center. And my son has autism. And I'm speaking in rebuttal, oh, by the way, I wanted to mention, it was earlier mentioned that Bill Osmanson was from Oregon, well, he has lots of close family here, and he's practiced dentistry here locally, so I thought you might like to know that. So I'm speaking in rebuttal to the fluoridation endorsers presenting last week, that there are more, I want to tell you, there's more than 4,000 professionals who have signed a statement calling for an end to water fluoridation. These professionals include molecular biologists, dentists, pediatricians, toxicologists, cardiologists, nurses, researchers, chemists, naturopaths, chiropractors, engineers, water commissioners, attorneys, dieticians, Nobel Prize winners, and many more. 143 of these professionals who have signed are in the state of Washington. Many, if not most, of these professionals once believed in the benefits and safety of fluoridation, and so did I. But then, they finally read the actual scientific studies themselves, and realized that the fluoride endorsers are selling an idea that is no longer upheld by the science of today. These professionals found, through their own intensive study of the research and the literature on fluoride, that the benefits, if any, do not warrant the significant health risks. Please see the complete list, complete professional's statement that we're providing by email. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Next is Ally Larkin.
Good evening, Mayor Law and Council Members. Ally Larkin, L-A-R-K-I-N, and I live in Des Moines, Washington. And at the request of Dr. Bill Osmanson, who couldn't be here this evening, he asked that I share the following with you. In the testimony on fluoridation last week, DOH Office and Drinking Water Program Coordinator Richard Pedler's statement for Maxine Hayes, DOH State Health Officer, claims fluoridation is the most cost-effective, safe, and effective means of reducing tooth decay. However, no scientific studies were provided, and no verication by the Food and Drug Administration Center for Drug Evaluation and Safety were provided. The claim that fluoridation is the most effective suggests fluoridation is more effective than tooth brushing, flossing, or diet. Such claim is without a shred of scientific evidence. In an attempt to protect policy, Dr. Hayes grossly exaggerates and speculates, and I doubt on second thought, she would agree with her own statement. Dr. Hayes needs to provide evidence that the FDA-CDR makes judgment based on evidence of safe and effective, but the FDA-CDR has repeatedly found the evidence supporting the ingestion of fluoride as effective is incomplete and has denied approval. The FDA has only approval and topical use of fluoride, not ingestion of fluoride. Safety and efficacy, trouble with that word, U.S. Health and Human Services Secretary Kathleen Sebelius has made final determination under 21 U.S.C. 36BBB-2 that fluoridation products are drugs, and prescription drugs, and to be regulated by the Food and Drug Administration. The city of Renton needs to contact the FDA-CDR and gain approval or exemption from drug approval regularity oversight. The DOH does not have authorization by Congress or the legislature to determine the safety or efficacy of any substance used with the intent to prevent disease. DOH is not a drug regulatory agency or a drug approval agency in Washington State. The Board of Health is charged with the safety of water, but not drugs. Just because a drug manufacturer adds their drug to public water does not exempt the drug manufacturer from FDA-CDR approval. The Board of Pharmacy regulates drugs and drug manufacturers in Washington State, but does not provide for FDA-CDR drug approval. From the Board of Health's response to me today, the Board has no record of any form having been provided for the review and the safety of artificial fluoridation as provided for an RCW 43205O. The State Board of Health shall provide a form for the development of public health policy in Washington State, RCW 43.20.50. In order to protect public health, the State Board of Health shall adopt rules for Group A public water systems necessary to assure safe and reliable public drinking water and to protect the public health. Cost-effective health officer Maxine Hayes claims fluoridation is cost-effective. However, no cost accounting or prospective randomized controlled trials are provided. Dr. Hayes mistakenly relies on others and references studies based on estimates and assumptions, not measured evidence. No, not one prospective randomized controlled trial has ever been published supporting cost-effectiveness of fluoridation. The evidence I have proved to the city of Renton should be reviewed. For example, in Port Angeles, some requested fluoridation because the hospital was seeing so many young children for emergency room toothaches, and the costs were significant. However, about four years after fluoridation was started, the costs- However, about four years after fluoridation was started, the cost for emergency room visits for toothaches were significantly higher, perhaps up to double. Fluoridation was not effective. Several studies have reviewed dental caries after fluoride cessation, and evidence is consistent that caries do not increase when fluoridation is stopped. Another claim by Maxine Hayes is that fluoridation is equitable. Indeed, everyone gets fluoride with fluoridation, but that does not mean it is fair, just right, or reasonable, as the word equitable is defined. Giving anyone someone, giving anyone something they don't want is not fair, just right, or reasonable. Every human rights treatment and research guideline start out with the right of each person to have self-determination and the right to refuse treatment. Governments do not have the right to force competent adults to ingest any approved drug without their consent. Consent is the foundation of all health care except fluoridation. Thank you for your careful consideration, working on and providing my family in Renton with safe, clean water without any additives. Sincerely, Bill Osmanson. Gee, I got that through in five minutes, so I want to just add a couple of things that happened to me today that just, fluoride in our animals. I watched videos of beautiful Arabian horses in Colorado. This woman pays thirty thousand dollars for these horses. She trains them, sells them for half a million. Four of them are dead since they started putting fluoride in the water those horses drink. In San Diego, now that they've started fluoridating the water, the elephants, who drink up to sixty gallons of water a day, I watched them. They're getting mean, they won't take orders, they're walking funny, and they've had to put them down.
Ms. Larkin, I'm sorry, your five minutes are up.
Oh, there's the timer, I was looking over there. So, I say, that's a little bit I want to share with you today with the animals.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Next is Audrey Adams.
Hi, I'm Audrey Adams from Renton, and I'd like to comment about the presentation last week. The promoters of fluoridation gave strong endorsements but lacked the science and study references that Dr. Bill Osmanson brought to you, and many of those statements must be challenged. Your staff member said that reverse osmosis filtration would take the fluoride out of the water, but RO filter doesn't take a hundred percent of the unwanted fluoride out. Glacier Water, commercial reverse osmosis systems that are found throughout grocery stores in Renton and elsewhere, said that their RO filters have only ninety-two to ninety-five percent of the fluoride, which is significant for people with hypersensitivity to fluoride. Further, low-income parents trying to protect their infants on formula won't have the two to five hundred dollars for an in-home RO system. Others cannot install one due to space or the renting. Most people rely on bottled water, frankly, to protect themselves from fluoride at a cost of anywhere from a dollar to seven dollars a gallon when you're buying individual containers, and a huge, contributing to a huge plastic waste problem. Others use refillable systems like the Glacier at forty-one cents a gallon. Citizens in Renton trying to avoid fluoride will pay roughly anywhere from, say, sixty times to up to a thousand times more than tap water. This just simply is not affordable for people who are struggling to feed their family. Richard Pedler stated that there is less tooth decay in fluoridated areas compared to unfluoridated areas. This claim is not supported by science, nor, not even a single grade-A study in half a century. Please read Chapter Six in the book that I gave you, The Case Against Fluoride, and also please review the graph, I sent some graphs by email, and I asked you to take a look at them. It's showing the carries rate in fluoridated versus unfluoridated countries where the rates of cavities have reduced at the same rate regardless of fluoridation. Dr. Peyton Gott said that he'd seen kids before and after in Renton, before and after Renton began fluoridating, and believes he's seen no significant problem with increased dental fluorosis during that time. My nephew, who has ugly white spots on every single one of his teeth, would argue. And the CDC says that twenty-three percent of twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds had dental fluorosis in nineteen eighty-six, but now it's forty-one percent for that, say, age range. And that's a certain sign that children are getting too much fluoride, and that the overall sources of fluoride has increased dramatically. Please see the graph that I've sent you by email again. And Dr. Burgess stated that fluoride improves the lives of people regardless of race, quote-unquote. But many black leaders disagree. Black and Hispanic children are more vulnerable to fluoride's toxicity. According to the CDC's National Survey of Dental Fluorosis, black and Mexican-American children have significantly higher rates of dental fluorosis than white children. The recognition that minority children appear to be more vulnerable to toxic effects of fluoride, combined with the fact that low-income families are less able to avoid drinking fluoridated water, has prompted prominent leaders in the environmental justice movement to oppose fluoridation. Black Americans have higher rates of lactose intolerance, kidney problems, and diabetes, all of which may exacerbate fluoride's toxicity. Dr. Burgess also said that fluoride has proven to prevent twenty-five to forty percent of cavities, but failed to provide any such proof or evidence. And I'm providing you evidence today that her statement is definitely not proven. The Iowa Fluoride Study, a multimillion-dollar U.S. National Institute of Health-funded study published in two thousand nine, found no significant relationship between tooth decay and fluoride intake among children. Surprisingly, this is the first time tooth decay has been investigated as a function of individual fluoride exposure as opposed to mere residence in a fluoridated community. And I've sent that study to you also by email. So the University of Iowa researchers say fluoride doesn't reduce cavities. Harvard researchers say fluoride harms infant brains and reduces IQ, and I provided that study to you a couple weeks ago. I'm just a simple mom, but I was able to provide you these studies. And my question is, why can't the fluoride advocates do the same? Why can't they do as much as I do? They're not giving you the actual studies. And they're hoping that you won't read what I give you, and I'm trusting that you will. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Olmar Peters.
I'd like to add to my comment from last week about fluoridation. All the signals my system uses to protest fluoride are widespread in society. There's a billions-of-dollars industry of drugs to suppress them. People aren't taught the observation skills, to instead learn from the signals, to be able to distinguish and avoid the causes. It seems unlikely that, out of all the people who get such signals enough to support that huge industry, I'm the only one whose system uses them to object to this ubiquitous, cumulative, and hard-to-avoid toxicant? For me, the signals include, within hours of exposure, headache, hay fever, a persistent sore throat, and canker sores, and cold, and cough, disrupted sleep, muscle spasms, charlie horses, aching joints and muscles, digestive upsets. This cascade of troubles is triggered by my drinking even a glass or two of fluoridated water, or eating one or two meals cooked with it or grown on it, or soaking in a tub of it. Filtered water doesn't help. That's how I learned, by repeated experience, that fluoride isn't removed by normal filters, requires much more costly equipment, many households can't afford it. I was able to reduce these problems by addressing them as food allergies or intolerances. However, I went on to lose the use of ninety percent of kinds of food, and kept losing more, despite years of five-day food rotation, keeping a complete food diary, and other such preoccupying practices. Nobody should ever have to do these again, I did enough for everybody. But I did learn a lot that I hope others can find an easier way to learn. For six years, I did the rounds of healthcare professionals, both medical and natural. In nineteen seventy-nine, I began using unfluoridated water, at least at home, for drinking and cooking, though I didn't yet fully realize its significance. In nineteen eighty-one, I found a health resource, one of the nutritional kinesiologies, that knew what it was doing. In two months, it knitted my biochemical downspiral back up, gave me back safe use of eighty percent of those foods. For thirty years since, I've been able to eat freely, except that each fluoride exposure knocks me back into the downspiral, means weeks or months of stringent detox practices all over again to rebuild my assimilation. I had to learn this many times over, because avoiding fluoride in this society where it's everywhere is such a challenge that I really didn't want to know. It makes it nearly impossible to travel, eat out, spend much time with family and friends or at professional meetings, but it's become clear that, for me at least, food allergies and intolerances, blocked assimilation, and all the resulting signals are all just an intermediate step of causality. Fluoride is the top link in the whole chain. I couldn't have discovered this, or survived long enough even to discover it, except for being in an unfluoridated household. According to studies, humans retain fifty to eighty percent of all the fluoride we take in. Even humans in the best health accumulate fifty percent of fluoride intake. That means even people who don't yet experience any uncomfortable signals need to know that their fluoride exposures are using up their reserve capacity, using up that seeming freedom. Listing all the documented toxic effects of fluoridation is beyond scope of my comment, but they include suppressed and disrupted enzyme production, calcium metabolism, immune system. Relatedly, fluoride is medically known and used as a thyroid suppressor. Everyone now talks of the epidemic of obesity. Many are putting in conscientious hard work to reverse it, unaware that they're drinking and cooking with and bathing in a thyroid suppressor, not to mention the rest of its ill effects. Also, many grow urban gardens, not knowing they're watering them with a thyroid suppressor, et cetera, which the produce concentrates. That's a discourtesy to people's work for fitness and health, a discourtesy I'm sure you, the members of the Renton City Council, don't intend. I'm not on Renton's water system, but friends of mine are, and likely the people of Renton include many more who suffer the same discomforts and hazards, possibly from the same prevalent toxicant. I hope you'll relieve your citizens of this enforced exposure and afford them clear and accurate information and practical options about any fluoride exposures. There are many other documented long-term effects, including increased bone brittleness and incidence of hip fractures, and impaired neurological development of infants and children that also merit your thought.
Excuse me, Ms. Peters, oh, thank you. Okay, council, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we have five items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member liked pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Hearing none, and move the council concur on the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of committee reports. First one has to do with the water fluoridation issue, and just to be clear, the referral in was just to get more information, and so the committee report is proposed, discloses the referral. Madam Clerk can read that.
Committee of the Whole Committee Report, Water Fluoridation. The Committee of the Whole has heard presentations on the subject of fluoridation of the city's water supply, and recommends that the referral be closed. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Zwicker.
Move the council concur on the committee report?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Can I just comment a little bit on that, because I know we've got a lot of people that have spent a lot of time. For me, as a city councilperson, it really seems like it shouldn't, I shouldn't have to bear the burden of making that decision. It really should be something that's made at the state level, state or county level. I think, you know, I would much rather see them, hopefully they would have more time and money, to look at all the best practices and best science of all of this and make those decisions, rather than us making them for our citizens without having the opportunity to have all that time invested in research, so. I'd like to encourage the people out there that are still believe that to go forward, but to do it at a higher level.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, that was, this originally came into the Utilities Committee, but upon learning that council had the ultimate decision on fluoridating our water, I made a recommendation that we move this to the Committee of the Whole to increase the dialogue and to give opportunity for more information to be presented to us. But I, although I understand all of the research that has been presented to us from the various agencies nationally and locally, I do also believe that the, this decision is a decision that is a little bit, it's heavy for a council to take this type of a decision on, and that it could probably be best made by, I would even say, put it to the voters, perhaps, with some very thorough opportunity for presentations from both sides, provides equal opportunity for time and presentation and information for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just say?
Were you finished?
Oh, go ahead, Randy. I just, I agree with my colleagues, you know, by closing this referral, I think we did what we agreed, we had a forum, it was really good information. I think the eye and the various council members probably all want to sort of digest it, but I tend to agree that it really, you know, the state would have the scientists aboard that could really review this. It's difficult as a council to make our way through scientific literature, but anyways, I appreciate, I was in favor of having the forum, and I appreciate that we did that, so, thank you for that.
Thanks, Mr. Carmen. Okay, Mr. Zwicker.
Yeah, the second committee report, just before Madam Clerk reads it, I forgot to announce it, it's on our legislative agenda for 2013 that we just briefed on earlier in Committee of the Whole. Usually, as you know, we'd set things over and pass them out another week, but they're starting to schedule meetings on it, and it does help Suzanne and staff to have a finalized report, so we'll go ahead and, I'll propose it this evening. Madam Clerk?
Committee of the Whole Committee Report, 2013 State Legislative Agenda and Statement of Policy Positions. The Committee of the Whole concurs with the recommendation of the administration to adopt the 2013 State Legislative Agenda and Statement of Policy Positions as presented. Topics highlighted in the agenda include transportation solutions, fiscal stability, economic development, infrastructure, investment, public safety, and enhancing quality of life. The committee further authorizes the administration to work with state agencies and the legislature to advance this agenda. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Move that the council concur on the Committee of the Whole Committee Report?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, Finance Committee, we have several reports.
That's fine.
Finance Committee Report, Utility Bill Adjustment. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to grant the waiver requested for water sewer and King County metro-related charges due to a water main line leak at Copper Ridge Apartments at the service address of 4,600 Davis Avenue South, Building E, in the amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars and eight cents. The adjustment includes city water, seven thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars and seventeen cents, city water, thirteen thousand, two ninety-six, seventy-six, and King County metro, twenty-three thousand, three hundred, fifty-one dollars and fifty-five cents, for charges above their normal usage. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report?
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Breyer, second by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report, Bad Debt Write-Off. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to write off outstanding debt in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred, seventy-three dollars and fifty-four cents that has been deemed uncollectible after over twelve months of unsuccessful collection attempts. The total amount of bad debts consists of six accounts that are uncollectible due to various reasons such as bankruptcy. The committee further recommends that the necessary accounting adjustments be authorized to remove these debts as owing on the city's financial records. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer. Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the committee report?
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Breyer, second by Mr. Taylor that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report, Lease Agreement with Renton Housing Authority for the Cleveland Property. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign a lease agreement with the Renton Housing Authority for a three-year lease for a house on the Cleveland property for $1 rent per year. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report?
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Breyer, second by Mr. Taylor that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report, Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on December 3, 2012, Claim Vouchers 316998 through 317323, three wire transfers and one payroll run, with benefit withholding payments totaling $5,083,132.23, and payroll vouchers include 730 direct deposits and 65 payroll checks totaling $1,576,834.30. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Move that council concur with the Finance Committee Report?
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Breyer, second by Mr. Taylor that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor, and the Public Safety Committee did meet this evening and got briefings on the two subjects that were referred, which were fire alternate fire department response vehicles and Valley Communications CAD, which is a computer-aided dispatch system, and no action is needed, so therefore there won't be any reports.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a report from the Committee on Committees to present, giving our 2013 committee assignments.
Committee on Committees Report, Council Committee Assignments. The Committee on Committees recommends the following committees' chairmanships and committee assignments for the council for 2013. Finance, first and third Mondays at 4:00 PM, Terry Breyer Chair, Don Person Vice Chair, and Rich Swicker Member. Public Safety Committee, first and third Mondays at 5:00 PM, Don Person Chair, Terry Breyer Vice Chair, and Marcy Palmer Member. Community Services Committee, second and fourth Mondays at 4:30 PM, Greg Taylor Chair, Marcy Palmer Vice Chair, and Ed Prince Member. Utilities Committee, second and fourth Mondays at 5:00 PM, Ed Prince Chair, Richard Swicker Vice Chair, and Greg Taylor Member. Planning and Development Committee, second and fourth Thursdays at 3:00 PM, Rich Swicker Chair, Ed Prince Vice Chair, and Terry Breyer Member. Transportation Committee, second and fourth Thursdays at 4:00 PM, Marcy Palmer Chair, Greg Taylor Vice Chair, and Don Person Member. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Corman.
May I move the council concur in the committee report?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Swicker that council concur with the Committee on Committees Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I think it's a good time, once a year, as we sign these committees, to remind the audience and the viewing public that this is where much of the work gets done. By the time we get it up here on the dais, many of the items have been discussed by three members of the city council in one of these public committees, and we make the announcements about the upcoming meeting so that the public can attend, and often the committee chair will allow the public to even participate in those discussions. So, the committees are very important, and thanks to all the council members that agreed to chair these committees.
Thank you, Mr. Corman, and we're glad to see that Mr. Swicker has to go back to work. Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have a slug of ordinances for second and final reading.
The first ordinance for second and final reading is Title IV Docket Ordinance regarding the Docket Eight Code Amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter Two, Zoning Districts Uses and Standards, Chapter Three, Environmental Regulations in Overlay Districts, Chapter Four, Citywide Property Development Standards, Chapter Six, Street and Utility Standards, Chapter Seven, Subdivision Regulations, Chapter Eight, Permits, General and Appeals, Chapter Nine, Permit Specific, Chapter Ten, Legal Nonconforming Structures, Chapter Eleven, Definitions of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code, codifying the Title IV Docket Eight Amendments by adding a new section, 41045, entitled Vesting, Revising Code Language and Adding, Amending, and Deleting Definitions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read. Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Swicker that this ordinance be adopted as read. It's for second and final reading and requires a roll call.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
The second ordinance for second and final is the Title IV Docket Eight Technical Corrections Ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter One, Administration and Enforcement, Chapter Two, Zoning Districts Uses and Standards, Chapter Three, Environmental Regulations in Overlay Districts, Chapter Four, Citywide Development Regulations, Chapter Five, Building and Fire Prevention Standards, Chapter Six, Street and Utility Standards, Chapter Seven, Subdivision Regulations, Chapter Eight, Permits, General and Appeals, and Chapter Nine, Permit Specific, and Chapter Ten, Legal Nonconforming Structures, and Chapter Eleven, I'm sorry, Definitions of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code by Making Technical Corrections to Title IV and Adding, Amending, and Deleting Definitions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
Move the ordinance be adopted as read. Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Swicker that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance is a budget ordinance regarding basic life support emergency medical services fee. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Title V Finance and Business Regulations of City Code entitled Basic Life Support Emergency Medical Services Transport User Fee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move this ordinance be adopted as read? Second.
Been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Mr. Person that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one, no.
The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I should ask you this before the vote, but the, is it possible to respond to the point Ms. Larson brought up this evening about the first aid cars being subject to a public vote? And I don't want to put you on the spot tonight, there's a bit of history I'm not familiar with, but...
Well, I guess, yeah, that would be before my time, but probably not Larry Warren's time. I think the important thing to know is that we still have every day at least one aid car in service, and that aid car responds on aid responses and will be subject to being utilized for transports when available. And for as many years as I can think back, our engine companies have responded to aid calls, it's a major part of our response system. And so, we've never had just aid cars responding to medical aid calls.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'll maybe take a shot while Larry's dusting off the cobwebs. So, I don't recall when the vote was taken on the original medic one levy, and that's something Larry might be able to remember, but that called for a county-wide system that's probably the best in the country, of a combination of emergency medical technicians and paramedics to reduce the incidence of death due to cardiac arrest and other things, and you've heard presentations before about that. That system is a combination of our firefighters being trained in basic life support functions, and they respond whether they're in a fire engine, or in an aid car, or in a ladder truck, or whatever. The idea is to get people to the patients as quickly as we possibly can. Part of that system, from the inception, included transport by private ambulance, and so in Renton, for decades, almost all of the time, people who have needed to be transported have been transported by a private ambulance. And I don't know if, from the inception, those ambulance companies billed insurance companies or not, but I know that for at least the 22 years that I've been here, that's been the case. So, what is before the council and what you just approved is no change in our service delivery. All we have done is, in those instances, and in 2011, it was, our figure shows, it was 8% of the time, we actually transported. We transport when it is quicker for us to get a patient to a close-in hospital and back in service than it would be perhaps for us to wait for an ambulance. We never do that if there's a, you know, if it's a critical incident. Usually we can tell in the call dispatch, if somebody is in serious need of paramedics, they'll get dispatched the same time we get dispatched. The paramedics will get there and they'll transport. Or if there needs to be a transport by ambulance, oftentimes that call comes out very quickly after we're en route. So, but there are occasions when we're there, we're waiting, the ambulance may be busy or some other instance, and then we'll transport. As I said again, in 2011, that amounted to 8% of the time that people needed to be transported, they were transported by us. So, the vast majority of the time, people will continue to be transported, as they have been for decades, by a private ambulance company. And the critical part for all the public to know is that that emergency, those emergency-trained or critically-trained emergency technicians, whether it's our BLS-trained firefighters or our ALS-trained paramedics, will be there in the system as they have been and will continue to be. And that's a great system, it's one that we continue to support. The transport fee in those rare instances when you're going to be transported by a City of Renton aid car, now we'll bill your insurance company, and we'll work that through, and if, in fact, people don't have insurance, they won't get billed. So, it's one of those things where I think there's been a lot of confusion, and people somehow think that this is a new service or a dropped service. There is no change in the service, I just can't emphasize that enough. January, actually now September 1 of 2013, people will not see any difference in terms of how the service is being delivered. And I think there's probably been some confusion, because as the council knows, recently we've had, due to a lot of folks being out for injuries or sickness or whatever else, we've had to look at a couple of shifts where we've had to modify some of our service delivery, and we've gone from an engine to an aid car or some other thing. So, that shouldn't be confused with the transport fee issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Covington. Okay. Go ahead, Bonnie.
The next ordinance is regarding the system development fees. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41180 of Chapter One, Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code by relocating system development fees to the City of Renton Fee Schedule brochure and eliminating fee calculation examples.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Swicker.
Move this ordinance be adopted as read?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Ms. Breyer that this ordinance be adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance regards updating business license fee regulations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 551 and 553 of Chapter Five Business License of Title V Finance and Business Regulations of City Code by updating code language regarding business license fees.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move this ordinance be adopted as read?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Ms. Breyer that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance for second and final regards establishing the 2013 Property Tax Levy. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing the Property Tax Levy for the year 2013 for general city operational purposes in the amount of $32,563,355.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move this ordinance be adopted as read?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Ms. Breyer that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance for second and final is the 2013 Utility Tax Rates Ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 5111 of Chapter 11 Utility Tax of Title V Finance and Business Regulations of City Code relating to utility tax rates imposed on water, surface water, and solid waste utility enterprises.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Move this ordinance be adopted as read?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Ms. Breyer that this ordinance be adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
And the last ordinance for second and final reading regards adopting the 2013-14 Bionyl Budget. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the Bionyl Budget for the years 2013, 2014, in the amounts of $237,264,263, and $220,66,920, respectively.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Yeah, before I make the motion to adopt this ordinance, I'd like to thank the administration and my fellow council members and the community budget group, and all of our department heads and the public, and everybody for a lot of hard work in coming up with a balanced budget that we can hopefully survive very well in for the next two years, and without it, move the ordinance be adopted as read?
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
And before we vote, I'd like to thank Mr. Swicker for leading the way through that, that was very difficult. And also, just to make the comment that I think we saw at the committee of the whole meeting, that if I saw the numbers correctly, over the last, like, five years, the city of Renton population's up 56%.
Correct.
And we are down 15% in headcount over those same years. And we are down 15% in headcount over those same years, so it's amazing how much extra work our staff is carrying, incredible. Amazing they can deliver service at the rate they can with those numbers, so, a tough budget.
Thank you, Mr. Corman. So, it's been moved by Mr. Swicker, second by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be passed, approved as written? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, excuse me, this is for a roll call, sorry. Trying to get this through.
After I.
Mr. Swicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it, and the budget is passed. I too want to thank the council and all of our department heads and staff that have worked really hard on this. I really want to especially thank Ewan Wong and her staff that have had to work really hard trying to figure out where we're going to be, and it's been, once again, a tough budget process. And as you said, Mr. Corman, I think that our employees are doing a phenomenal job of providing services in spite of all of the cuts that we've had to endure over the last few years, so, thanks, everybody, for all the hard work. So, moving on to new business, Mr. Swicker.
Yes, at the end of the meeting, I will be announcing an executive session for tonight,